Your mics are on?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have an extra.
Oh, yeah, you do?
Think, yeah, well, maybe I don't. Yeah, I do. No, I don't.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Call the meeting to order. Would everyone please rise, please? And would, Russ, when? Would you please come forward to give the invocation?
Let us pray, please. Our Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your wisdom and guidance to be upon our council meeting tonight. We thank you for the men and women who serve in these positions to help our community, and we just anticipate a great year as we yield ourselves to you. Be with our committee tonight and give them the guidance that they need to deal with the issues that they face in this coming year. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Councilman Slakka, could you leave us the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh. Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Slakta.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilman Spear. Councilwoman Simons.
Here.
Councilman Longheart.
Here.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Oh, geez. Okay. That's all I'm gonna get tonight. So, we're gonna go to public comment on agenda items. If you have a comment about an agenda item, please come forward.
Good evening. Rick Steinmeier. I'd like to compliment the Lee County Sheriff's Department for having wisdom and talent to hire a guy named Pizaki, who, if you ever wanted a policeman, he's the one you'd want to get. And I'm glad to honor him tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred Forbes, member LPA. First of all, I'd like to compliment whoever put those pictures up, because they're really great. I think, personally. I'm here to make some comments about the item, I think it's 13B, which is the strategic plan. Number one, I'm in favor of economic development. I've worked many, many, many years of my life in that area. I would like to suggest that maybe we would consider the RPC as the experts that would work with us, and that they would, and whoever it is, that they would work with the LPA. We'd have lots of sessions together, open to the public, with lots of public comment. And one of my hopes would be that we would be able to come out of this, among other things, with the Chapter Four that looks as much like the comp plan as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Dawn Konsekowski. I just wanted to also comment on 13B. There's a great diversity in the backgrounds, ages, economic status, ethnic origins, and lifestyles of the citizens who live and work together while making Benita Springs their home. Few of today's Benita Springs residents were born here. The great majority made a deliberate and life-altering choice to relocate here because of the very specific things they liked about the community when they came, and perhaps even more importantly, because of what they saw and hoped Benita Springs would continue to be in the future. Such being the case, Benita Springs is blessed with a very high percentage of citizens who hold strong and clear beliefs about what the future of our city should be. The comprehensive plan does not need a rewrite by Florida Gulf Coast University, and certainly doesn't require an overlay for Little Hickory Island. During the comp plan process, over the course of several public workshops and community visioning sessions, a broad cross-section of this diverse population was given the opportunity to share and support their individual points of view. Certain paramount themes emerged as having a strong majority support among the groups. On these important issues and goals for the future, personal differences and circumstances amongst the participants was not as significant a force as a commonality of what brought each of them to this uniquely pleasant location in the first place. The input from citizens from all areas of the city was overwhelming. Everyone was in agreement that they wanted beach accesses protected, no commercial beaches, greater access for Lover's Key through state cooperation, non-commercial public beaches, clean beaches free of further commercial adoption, careful zoning to keep business out of residential areas, small-town flavor, keep Benita the special place it is and was. This was stated at Strategic Planning Workshop, May 14th, 2007, and repeated May 3rd, 2010, by Jim LaRue. May 14th, 2007, Jim Stansbury asked the council whether the vision in the comp plan remained valid for the years 2008 and beyond. The ensuing discussion concluded that it continued to capture the aspirations and concerns of the city. On May 3rd, 2010, the City Council held a Strategic Planning Workshop pertaining to the comp plan and goals and objectives portion. The mayor and council members agreed that the vision and goals and policies are still valid today, and they had no problem with our existing comprehensive plan. State Statute 163 provides that the future land use element shall establish the long-term end toward which land use programs and activities are ultimately directed. Therefore, Little Hickory Island does not need an overlay, and there is no need to have FGCU rewrite the citizens' comp plan. So please, protect all citizens and preserve the citizens' vision of their city. And as Bat McGruder so nicely put it, "If the car ain't broke, don't fix it."
Thank you. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Mary Ellen Klein from Hickory Boulevard.
I'm gonna ask you to speak right into the microphone. We want to hear you.
Hello.
Say your name again.
Is that right?
Go ahead.
Mary Ellen Klein from Hickory Boulevard. I would ditto what Dawn said, but I'm actually here to congratulate whoever is the road department that put the new area together in front of docks. That is going to save a lot of heartbreak and a lot of heartache for a lot of folks. Did a great job.
Oh, thank you. And anyone else, please? Oh, you can give to Audrey.
Diane Frazine. I'm at Benita Beach Club on Hickory Boulevard. And I'm here, basically, I agree with what Dawn said in regards to that, we do not need a rewrite. Couple other concerns I have is on the strategic plan. I see nowhere any plans or mention of beach re-nourishment funds. And I don't know how something as 1.2 million, or wherever the cost is gonna be, is not included in your plan going forward. And I guess that's why I'm here, to ask the council that. That's one of my issues, and I think...
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, please come forward. Any agenda item. Come on up, forward. On any agenda item. Yes, it should be on the agenda, please.
Dwayne Prairie, Benita Beach Club. And I would just agree with Diane and Dawn.
Oh. All right, thank you. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Ann Mummert, and I'm from Seascape on Hickory Boulevard. And my husband and I have chosen Benita Beach to live year-round. And we chose it because we didn't want a Fort Myers, we didn't want a Cocoa Beach, we didn't want a Naples. We want Benita Beach as it is now. And I just want to emphasize, that's why we have all our eggs in our basket in Benita Beach as it is now. So I agree with Dawn, and also, we are concerned about the replenishment of the beach. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. On any agenda item. Or, I guess specifically, this one agenda item, it looks like.
Linda Schneider, Seascape. I just want to echo what everyone has said so forth, so far, concerning the comp plan. We don't want a future Fort Myers on Little Hickory Island, so we'd like to keep the comp plan the way it is, keep it residential. One thing I would like to comment, I was speaking with the gal when we came over, as to whether the improvement of downtown Benita might benefit from maybe a parking area with shuttles to the beach that would give access to the beach area, perhaps even a small shopping area geared to those needs that beachgoers have. Hot dog stand, from everything, from little hot dogs to New York Stark-style hot dogs, but something that would be important for downtown Benita, but also provide the access to the beach that the city council wants, but hopefully all without changing our comp plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Please? Please come forward.
Hi, my name's Jim Roski, and I'm also on Hickory Boulevard at Castle Benita Two. I had some prepared comments, but I'm not gonna read them, because pretty much everything's been said. Instead, I'd like to request that we have a copy given.
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay. And I also want to echo, we don't want Benita Beach looking like Fort Myers Beach.
Good.
Thank you.
Anyone else this time? Please come forward. On any agenda item. No? All right. And we're gonna go ahead and proceed with the agenda. We'll close public comment. At this time, there'll be another opportunity coming up soon. But we're gonna go ahead and go to proclamations and presentations. And at this time, we have proclamation to the Interact Club members for their community service and ethical standards. Interact members, would you like to come forward, please? Steve, would you please come forward, please? This is something that Councilman McIntosh has been working on a long time here. Sorry. If I was a student, I know where I'd be right now. Oh. Anyway, this is a proclamation, "Whereas the Estero High School Interact Club was founded in January 17th, 1998, by the Rotary Club of Benita Springs." That's morning Rotary, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. "Whereas the Interact Club grew from five students in its first year of its existence to being the largest club on the high school campus, and whereas Interact Club is in its 15th year of supporting our city's quality of life by planning and conducting numerous community service projects each academic year. And whereas Interact Club members have contributed approximately 10,000 hours of community service to our area, and whereas Interact Club students pledge to act with honesty, to treat others fairly, build goodwill and friendships, and assure their actions benefit all that are concerned. And now, therefore, I, Ben Nelson Jr., Mayor, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Benita Springs, do hereby express appreciation for the community service that the Interact Club offers, and the ethical standards by which they live and the leadership they offer." I want to thank all of you for the fine work you do with the students, and especially to Steve. And Steve, could you go ahead? Everybody give them a hand, please, first. I'd like Steve to tell you a little bit about the Interact Club and Rotary, and what they've been doing here.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From my right, your left, Jim Kerr has been my co-sponsor as the Rotarian of the Noon Club. And Jim and I come to meetings, the officer meetings. To his immediate left is Mr. George Clover, the principal of Estero High School. If it wasn't for Mr. Clover, we wouldn't have the support of the entire school and the academic staff. And the key to the success is Ms. Clinker, standing next to Mr. Clover. Ms. Clinker is the sponsor, the Estero High School sponsor. She's at every meeting, every officer meeting, and more than that, during the community service projects where the kids are out working for our community to better it, she's there. So the 10,000 hours, you can include at least half those hours she's spent in planning and getting going for us. The Interact Club started in 1998, the high school with five students. We're now the largest club on campus with 65 students. So thank you very much, community, for your support.
Okay. Officer Pizaki. Why don't you come forward there and bring your cohorts with you there? All those fine officers from the community policing and Lee County Sheriff's. Come on up. Now, first of all, I'd like to tell you a little bit about Officer Lieutenant David Pizaki. When he first started work, it's been so long, he was four feet tall when he started working for us. Geez, he's big. And since we're losing our officer here, we're actually cutting our community policing in half because he's so big. See, I've been working all week on this, just for you. And I'm gonna pay for it later, probably. Really bad. But it has been a pleasure to work with David. He has been just friendly, friendly if you're on the right side of the law. He has been responsive. He's been just a great leader for the youngsters in town here. He's been a great friend to Benita Springs, to everybody here, and I really appreciate it. And thank you so much for, before I read this, on a personal basis, thank you so much for your service. I think that there's been some few select deputies. All our deputies have made this community safer, but you have done an extraordinary job. Thank you so much. And we have this enormous plaque. Well, it's enormous to me. That's the last big joke that I'm gonna do. This is a certificate of appreciation, and a very heartfelt one, presented to Lieutenant David Pizaki for your support and dedication to the city of Benita Springs, and the Lee County Sheriff's Office, and the Benita Springs Community Policing Unit. Thank you so much, on behalf of the City Council, myself, our staff, and these citizens of Benita Springs. You are awesome. Thank you so much, and good luck in all your future endeavors.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Could you explain, he's taking over the whole county at night now?
I'm gonna have you guys look right here.
He's not leaving. He's getting bigger.
You're gonna need it. Okay, ready?
Watch it.
Couple more.
So David, you're taking over the entire district for the nighttime shift? Is that what you're doing?
Seven nights, every two weeks.
Seven nights, every two weeks? So watch it out there. Watch it out there. To all our community policing officers and all the sheriff's friends, thank you. Would you like to say something?
I do.
Oh, good.
You know me. First, I'd just like to say, a lot of people know Dave. He's been around for quite a while. He started as one of the community policing deputies, was then promoted to sergeant in Benita, and then finally to lieutenant here in Benita. He has done an outstanding job. And the only big joke I'll say is, it's pretty large shoes to fill for the new lieutenant who's taking open, who's here tonight, Adam Sedwick. He's been in the district for quite a while as well. But Dave will definitely be missed. We told him when we saw him tonight, you know, this is what we liked, is when it was the three of us, and then the rest, as we all filtered around the picnic table this evening. So he will be missed. We will miss him. Benita is not losing a good guy, because he is now patrolling the entire county. But if you have his cellphone number, we'll get you a new one, because I'm sure he's gonna appreciate that phone not ringing as much.
Can you still call me just after 2:00, because I'm working?
Anyway, thank you, right? Everybody give him a big hand again, please.
And yes, it does take two to replace one around here, so. We do have some new additions to the community policing team, and we figured tonight would be a good night to introduce them as well. Lieutenant Adam Sedwick is going to try and fill Dave's shoes here in Benita. I think he'll do a good job. He will be the new lieutenant over the unit. And then Deputy Tony Perfetto, who's one of our Delta District deputies, is transferring over to the Benita Community Policing. He comes with a lot of experience, and he is a certified bomb guy, so if we have any suspicious packages, we're good now. But yes, so we have some good additions to the team, and Dave will be sorely missed. And if I could raise enough money to bribe him to come back, we'll be taking collections later on in the back. Yeah.
Welcome. Welcome to Benita Springs, and thank you very much. Everybody, thank you. Welcome up.
Lieutenant Pizaki, well, we just want to make you cry. I just want to take a second, because the mayor said I could, to just say, you guys, he's my favorite cop. Good luck filling his shoes. But you have done so much for our city, and personally, all of our little neighborhoods, you have dropped crime by 46 percent, not alone, but with these guys. But you were always there for us. We could call you day or night, and I know I can still call you at 4:30 in the morning. And, I mean, we're just gonna miss you. One of the family. Come on down, come on back. You'll always be one of us. Yeah, love you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, well, you come on back. We do want to bribe you back here.
Council McIntosh.
I thought, I think it's good we have a bomb specialist for your jokes.
Bada bing.
That was really good.
We need councilmen.
You're gonna get a promotion. We're gonna make you sit outside tomorrow.
We need a rimshot.
Or allow you to sit outside. Oh, that was very nice. Okay, we're gonna go to the consent agenda right now. And does anyone, we have two items on a consent agenda. Does anyone have anything that they would like to pull off of there? No? Would you like to approve it?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Spear?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, and we are to the second reading and public hearing of the following ordinances. Audrey.
Thank you. Let me read the title block into the record. This is an amendment to Benita Springs Land Development Code, amending and replacing the sign ordinance, ordinance number 09-12, Chapter 6 of the City of Benita Springs Land Development Code, amending 6-2 definitions, amending 6-183 billboards, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion in code, and effective date. This is the second reading that has been continued. The history is outlined in the green sheet. The city staff is requesting an additional continuance of this ordinance until February 15th, 2012, 9:00 a.m. in these chambers, so that the city is able to further discuss in agreement with Carter Outdoor Advertising. Inasmuch, we're not prepared to adopt it tonight. We would request to continue it forward to February 15th. It is a public hearing, so with the request, I would request that you allow anyone wishing to speak on the public hearing to be able to do so now.
Okay. Prior to any motion being made, let's go ahead and ask for public comment this time. Is there any public, members of the public wish to speak this time on this particular matter? Come forward, please. It's on the sign ordinance. I thought I'd outweighed you.
Rick Steinmeier, a little bit off the rocker, but that new sign they put up on county property, is there any way to regulate that inside the city? It's our city, but it's their road. A lot of confusion over it. I don't think people are too happy with that sign. I don't know if there's anything we can do about it. That's why we got an attorney, I guess.
Thank you, Rick. Anyone else this time? Wish to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Counsel, would you like to go ahead and make a motion?
Make a motion.
We have a motion and a second. And what's, is there a date certain? Is that what you said?
Yes, to February 12th, 2012, 9...
February 15th.
2012, 9:00 a.m. in these chambers.
Okay, good. And we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Spear?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, and we're gonna go, Audrey, you have anything else up there? No?
No, sir.
No, okay. We're gonna go to council member items at this time, and we're gonna do it a little different here. Stephen, let's start with you.
I have nothing. I'm gonna wait for the strategic planning, and then I'll have a few questions for...
Oh, okay. Good, good. All right. And John?
Same here.
Same here. Janet?
You know that I've always got something to talk about.
Ah, okay.
The Nature Place, the stargazing evening Saturday, January 14th. Tickets are still available for that. They are limited to only 60 people. It is a family fun event. We have an astronomer there, Linda Jacobson of Calusa Night Sky Tours. She started the Calusa Planetarium, and she's very knowledgeable, and we are hoping for a clear night. It is a dark sky out there. That's the one really neat thing, when you head out just a little bit east, it's amazing how much you can see out there. So tickets are available at Parks and Recreation and at the First Community Bank of Southwest Florida. They've been a great supporter of all things going on at the Nature Place. So that's Saturday, January 14th, that evening. Friday, January 13th, is the last day to order your rain barrel, if you want to be part of the rain barrel workshop at the Earth Day, Arbor Day event at the Nature Place also, and that is January 21st, that event, and that's from 10:00 to 2:00. Sunday, January 22nd, the Benita Springs Concert Band, 2:00 p.m. in Riverside Park. That is always a really fun way to spend Sunday afternoon. And then also, don't forget, every Wednesday, downtown Benita Lions Club, Farmer's Market goes on. So that's a neat thing to do on Wednesday mornings. And then Sunday afternoons, at the Lyles Historic Plaza, the cottages, the artist cottages are open, and there's always little activity down there, and it's a fun, again, another fun way to spend your Sunday afternoon. So, thank you.
Good, thank you. Martha, what do you have for us today?
Happy New Year. Glad to see y'all. And I'd just like to ask the citizens to watch what the state legislature's doing. If there's any concern that this city council's bringing up, I hope we can count on their help to lobby the legislature not to reduce municipal rights, because those are your rights.
Good. Thank you very much. And Mr. Stephen. Funny guy.
Hell, yeah.
Funny guy.
Thank you very much. The only thing I have for the council is to mark calendars for sure. January 13th, Friday, is Government Day. We, I'll have the final agenda to you with your students as mentors early next week, and that'll be an 8:00 start here at City Hall. And you'll have them from approximately 8:30 to 10:00 to tell them what you do, show them around your district if you'd like, also the city staff members. From 10:30, from 10:00 o'clock on, there'll be a mock city council meeting, and then they'll wrap up with what they learned that day with a little lunch. So it'll be done by 12:30 or so. But thank you very much for your participation, all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Steve, I gotta tell you, thank you so much for your work with the students, with the, through the Rotary Club and through the city council. It's amazing. It's really great to get to know the kids, and it's really good to see that they're so interested in this stuff. I mean, it's a good thing. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. And Bill, what do you have for us today?
I'll reserve my comments till the strategic planning.
Okay, good. And I just want to just interject here that Carl and I had a good meeting here with Carol Green, our lobbyists today, and she's prepared to go up there and represent us real well at Tallahassee. We expressed all your concerns that you had put on there on our legislative agenda. Really, nothing new, except the usual. So she's preparing to go do battle for us, and she will keep you all informed, as usual. Ashley will, that is. And that's all I have. And then at this time, we're gonna go ahead and go to public comment once more. Now, this public comment is on anything that you would like to speak on whatsoever. Well, pretty much. Watch that.
Hi, Christine Ross, the CEO of the Benita Springs Area Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here this evening to let you know that the chamber's having a candidates forum on January 10th at the Benita Grand Fire Station at 6:00 p.m. It is a public activity that we are promoting to create greater awareness about all the candidates that are running for office. We are going to find a way to get it videotaped, and we wondered if afterward, because we're concerned only two hundred people can fit into the room, we'd like a lot of people to have access to the information, we wondered if you'd consider allowing the video to be put on channel ninety-eight so that more of community members who are, don't have access, could gain access to it. We know that all the candidates will be participating, so it's just a request for greater community communication.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Hello, Mary Mima with Benita Springs Utilities, and I'd like to welcome everyone to come out to the utility on January the fourteenth. From ten AM to two o'clock in the afternoon, we're having an open house at our Operations Service Center on Operations Way near Citrus Park, and people can tour the facility, or they can tour our East Water Reclamation Facility, and also our water plant on East Terry Street. We'll have refreshments and some information, and some of the directors and staff will be there for everybody to meet and talk with. So come on out.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hey, Rick Steinmeier, slot machines at the dog track, what do, what does the City of Benita Springs get out of it, except more traffic? I don't know, I'd like to know what they get out of it, thank you.
Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Wait a minute, I know you.
Good evening, Barbara Barnes Buchanan. I am here just to make a couple statements on Agenda Item Twelve-B, Presentation and Approval of Strategic Plan, and it actually pertains to the Comprehensive Plan. And for background information, I am a certified planner, and I do have a master's in business, and I've worked for thirty years on comprehensive planning. I worked on the first Lee County Comprehensive Plan up in Fort Myers, and I worked on the first City Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan. And each process took years to complete, and hundreds and hundreds of people. Actually, with Lee County, it was more than hundreds, but in the city, we had innumerable public workshops, town meetings, local meetings, and it went on and on, and we worked with a variety of different certified planners, including Jim LaRue and Bill Brison, and we took input over years and years, culminating in the Comprehensive Plan that you have today, with a very, very clear-cut vision statement in it, that I know as the council has been attempting to go ahead and implement over the years through their budget process. I'm here to suggest that possibly using Florida Gulf Coast University staff, which has not been identified explicitly what type of background they have, is probably not in the city's best interest, given that the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of private citizens participated in the development of the Comprehensive Plan, that I think that you could probably go back through with your staff, through some public workshops and town hall meetings, and probably refine a few of the things that are in there. But I think that the citizens of Benita Springs that worked so diligently and so hard should be given the opportunity to work on this directly, and that I, I state that Florida Gulf Coast University, using some of their students, would be a definite learning curve for them, and that your staff would actually spend more time trying to bring them up to speed on the individual City Benita Springs characteristics that we have. I'll be more than happy to participate in the process in any fashion or manner, no matter what type of position I am working in at the time. I'll be happy to do any of that, I've worked, this is near and dear to my heart, the Comprehensive Plan really does embody the spirit of the City Benita Springs, and I do feel that Florida Gulf Coast University staff is, is not close to it, and I think that you really need to keep it at home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Diane Frazine, again. Being that the beach, this is, we can talk about anything, right? So being that the beach is public beach and is re-nourished by your portion of the city, I would like this council to look into the possibility of making chumming for shark illegal, because we have people out, it's illegal on Fort Myers Beach, on our public beach, out in front of us, they are bringing in shark, they are bringing them into swimming areas where your citizens want to swim, and I think that this council should look into that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good evening, Dave Grotheus, resident of Vanderbilt Lakes. In the Strategic Plan, Item Twelve-B on the agenda, in reviewing it, it notes, create an overlay for Hickory Boulevard for future development. I would encourage you to look closely at that and perhaps approach it from a different angle, and that is correct the future land use maps, maybe before you consider any overlays or any other changes. Secondly, beach re-nourishment is an ongoing theme out on the beach, it's roughly a seven-year cycle. It would make sense to create a reserve and keep money back for that, so that it's dedicated to that issue and can be addressed, and it doesn't need to be readdressed every seven years, and entertaining the thought of a special assessment on the residents out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Dawn Konsekowski, and on Twelve-B, Strategic Planning, just a few additional thoughts. The city manager has stated that the state requires a periodic review of the Comprehensive Plan, which is correct. Based on the city's evaluation and appraisal report, the council adopted ordinance oh-nine-oh-five on April fifteenth, two thousand and nine. The evaluation and appraisal of the Comprehensive Plan is done once every seven years, and each local government shall evaluate its Comprehensive Plan to determine if the plan amendments are necessary to reflect changes in state requirements. Florida statutes also require local governments to annually adopt and update a five-year schedule of capital improvements as part of the Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan shall contain a capital improvements element designed to consider the need for and the location of public facilities in order to encourage the efficient use of such facilities. Neither the seven-year EAR nor the annual capital improvement requirements of state statutes would make it necessary for the city to rewrite the future land use element of the comp plan that reflects the residents' vision and most affects zoning in the Land Development Code. Needlessly rewriting the future land use element negatively would affect the citizens' vision as stated in the future land use portion of the comp plan, and is not necessary. State statute provides that the future land use element shall establish a long-term end toward which land use programs and activities are ultimately directed. This ensures that the citizens' long-term vision cannot be changed on a whim by any sitting council. It protects all property values. That is a segment of economic development, isn't it? I ask that you please put the following on your Strategic Plan list that were inadvertently overlooked. Number one, fix all errors on future land use and zoning map. Number two, delete all permitted uses and special exception uses listed in zoning, Chapter Four, that are inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan. Number three, wait for a public need rather than a personal want to rewrite any portion of the comp plan, especially the citizens' vision as indicated in the text of the future land use element and coastal high hazard area. Number four, set aside a special fund for beach re-nourishment, which benefits all residents and visitors of the city, county, and state. And the idea that Fred Forbes had for Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council to work with the LPA and the citizens, bringing the zoning consistent with the comp plan, I think is a wonderful idea, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
How do you do? My name's Alva Capel, I'm a fairly new resident to the Benita Beach and Tennis Club. There's a pedestrian walkway that goes to the beach from the Benita Beach and Tennis Club that the drivers do not always stop for. Probably ninety percent do not stop for. I've seen on Marco Island, perhaps, a lighted system where you either hit the button on the side and it gets lit up. I think partial of the problem is the corner that goes around there, and I see it often, I'll stand in the middle with both my arms up, and they'll still go whipping around. One of which is there's not a sign up that says you are breaking state law, once I'm in the pedestrian walkway. And I see it at other pedestrian walkways, they at least have that state sign up saying this is, you are breaking the law, once you're in the walkway. Another comment I'd like to make is, I hear, and I'm fairly new to this as well, is the Florida Gulf Coast University, a study of your Comprehensive Plan. I'm a graduate of the University of Miami, Masters of Real Estate Development and Urbanism, and we did a studio workshop for the City of Hollywood. Now, we weren't to redo their Comprehensive Plan, but we came in there as unbiased look at their city and of their master plan, more so concerning their CRAs, their Community Reinvestment Areas, both the downtown and the beach area. And by us, through urban planners, masters of real estate, architects, and engineers coming in with an unbiased view, speaking with developers, business owners, landowners, and the public, came up with quite a comprehensive plan for the city. We compared it to a study that was done by the Urban Land Institute just a few years prior, and I'd have to say we're at par, if not better. So I'm not sure which program Florida Gulf Coast University or programs they are using, but if you can get pro bono, and you could have some students come in and take an unbiased look at the City of Benita, it might be for its benefit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Alex Grant, eleven-eight fifty-one, East Terry Street, former city councilman, former member of local planning agency, and former liaison with the Benita Springs Fire District for four years while I was on the city council. In the present budget year, the Benita Springs Fire Department was some four million dollars short, therefore eighteen fire department employees needed to take retirement, some early retirement, in order to balance the budget. Okay, prior to the retirement events, some twelve fire department employees retired when the present fire chief took over. In the next five years, another ten fire department employees will retire after reaching twenty-five years plus of service. So by the time the new city council finishes its term, about half of the operations fire department force will be on retirement. This at a time when the economy, while improving, will still be not as robust as between two thousand and one and two thousand and seven boom years. Also, the fire district still owes some five million, five hundred thousand dollars for fire station number four in interest and payment till the year twenty-twenty-three. While in, the impact fees will not reach the four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar per year that this actually costs to pay the bank. I feel that the fire district will financially implode within the next four-year term due, within your next four-year term, due to these pressures, and the fire department will then be needed to be taken over by this future city council, regardless of government-like philosophy. I had witnessed the present fire commission not being fully cognizant of the financial impacts of what they're doing, and I've noticed that when I was on the liaison, as the fire district reported that to the previous city manager, and there has been only very minor improvement in that area. There, it's, it's, it's a big problem with the present fire commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Linda Schneider, again. I just wanted to echo agreement with Mr. Grotheus and Dawn on a reserve for the beach re-nourishment. I've been an owner since nineteen eighty-four, of course, through two beach re-nourishments, and I understand that in two thousand and six, there was a fund available that was to be funded annually for that. The funds were used in other areas, so I would definitely like to see not only the city pay for the current re-nourishment as they did in the past, but also to set up a fund as a reserve that cannot be used for other things for our future nourishments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and carry on here. Oh, okay. Thank you, sir. City Attorney's Report.
Nothing today, sir.
Nothing, I didn't see anything in there, but thank you very much. City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, before I get started here, did the council wish to respond to Mrs. Ross's request on channel ninety-eight?
Audrey, I'm going to go ahead and ask you to respond to that, I think there's an easy answer.
There is, I can give it off the top of my head, which is, our administrative code would not permit it.
Yeah, there you go. But thank you for the request, but as, Audrey, Christine, are you still here?
And I'll be happy to talk with Ms. Ross.
You couldn't go ahead and explain to her that, about the administrative code and how it's not allowed?
Yes.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Okay.
I beg your pardon?
I was wondering if the administrative code says about a forum being held in City Hall, not about stuff being broadcast on ninety-eight?
It does.
Okay, so it's specifically to the broadcast, thank you so much.
Okay, good. Carl?
Good.
You have a presentation to make?
Not right now.
No?
The first, the first item on my agenda is the resolution before you with regards to slot gaming in, in the city, and really, this is not an issue about whether or not gambling is good, bad, or indifferent. The question really here is whether or not the council wants to pass a resolution asking the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County to place on a ballot a question as to whether or not slot gaming should be allowed at paramutual racetracks. Mr. Haveneck is here, just for your information, in case you have any questions with regards to the issue itself, we stand ready for any questions you might have.
Okay, so the resolution is just from the City of Benita Springs, requesting that the county commissioners put it on, up for referendum.
That, that is correct, and that they do so by January thirty-first. They make the decision by January thirty-first for a November election.
There you go.
Correct.
Okay, any questions?
I don't have a question, but let me say that I had conversations with a couple of county commissioners on this. They had a meeting, both, you know, there was an issue about a casino in East Fort Myers, they at their, and about this, about the dog track with slot machines, they had a discussion on their board, and the commissioners decided that if they heard from the city with the resolution, that they would be willing to put, put it forward. In the, in the state law, it allows us, as described here, it allows counties currently to vote on having slot machines at existing paramutuals. It does not allow citizens, you know, because there's been a petition going around about this casino, it does not allow citizens to have referendums on casinos, that's within state law, not our purview on the county or municipal level. So this is certainly an opportunity for us to get the, the pulse of the people, get a consensus among the voters in Lee County about if this is something that they want to see, to Mr. Stein, Steinmeier's comment about what's the city going to get out of it, let's first find out if the city wants, if the county wants it, and then we'll see what happens there. But, you know, that's not for us to say whether we want it or we don't want it, it's to see if the people want it, and I certainly think any opportunity that we can have the people's voice be heard is awesome. That will be up to the dog track owners to make their pitch, and the people who don't want slot machines to make their pitch, and, you know, this is just so that we allow people to hear it, and I'm sure you'll hear more about that, Mr. Steinmeier, in the future.
Okay, anyone else that can?
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second it.
There's a motion to move the resolution in a second. Any other comment? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Spear?
Aye. Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
And Carl, I hear you want me to sign that like right now, right?
Yes, sir.
You can't do better than that.
Okay, good.
We have to submit to the county tomorrow morning. The next item on the agenda is the presentation of the twenty-eleven proposed Strategic Plan Action Register, which is the rather large document as it came out. Council will recall that on October thirty-first, you held a strategic planning session. During that time, there was a number of objectives and priorities that you stated, that you thought were important. You had an opportunity to vote on those in order to try to come up with some type of ranking. So as you take a look at the action register, the third column in is objectives and priorities. When we took a look at these, when we were trying to put the action register together, we realized that a number of these objectives and priorities were actually, could be categorized as strategies under some larger umbrella, like the revitalization of Old Forty-One or the downtown area. But we also knew that we walked away But we also knew that we walked away that day with an understanding on the part of the council that certain priorities and objectives were listed, and so we kept them in that column. What you have before you are not only those objectives and priorities, but also suggested strategies by the staff, very high level, not every single one, strategies to accomplish the objectives and priorities, and then also an attempt at setting up metrics in order to measure success, in order to keep some of these things moving forward, and so that's why you see these columns filled with all kinds of words. This is now an 11-page document. I think Councilmember Spear even asked us the day of October 31st whether or not this was too much. I said no at the time. I think this is significant. This is, I think, in talking to Councilmember Simons earlier today, that she said this would certainly be an aggressive document, and it is. We are here tonight to present this document to you formally and to ask for your thoughts and your comments on it. This is obviously not a done deal, and we look forward to your comments. Obviously, there is some considerable citizen concern with regards to particularly one of the objectives and priorities, actually, two of them. So I know that you've all taken that in, so we stand ready for any questions or comments you might have. Our goal would be, at some point in time, if not tonight, to adopt this document so that the staff can clearly understand what the priorities of the council are, and we can use our resources in the most appropriate way. Thank you.
Carl, before the council starts commenting, asking questions, your indulgent counsel, would you, just on this one, there's one that's of obvious concern to everybody, well, a lot of people in the audience here, so far as the comprehensive plan, which it says, "update, improve comprehensive plan, land development code." Can you explain to me what you had envisioned there, or what your exact vision was, what that entails, and what you would see that FGCU's role or a consultant's role actually is in that process?
Sure, thank you. Be happy to. First off, the update, improve comp plan and improve the land development code was something that five of you voted for as a strategic priority. But you have to understand the context in which this is offered, and that is, this is under economic development. And so it is my understanding as your city manager that when you were talking about economic development, we were talking about those areas where economic development would be appropriate within the city. Obviously, some people believe that that's only along New 41. I think there's been a considerable amount of offerings that the downtown area is an opportunity for us, along Old 41. So, and other areas where we have some industrial areas, and we have some vacant property and vacant space, where some of our rules and our regulations may get in the way of providing the economic development opportunities that we would like to see in the future. I will say publicly, it was never envisioned in my mind, and I did never got the impression from the city council from October 31st, that the term economic development would ever apply out west to Hickory Island. So I know that there's a lot of citizen's concern. We certainly respect that, but this was, this, again, in a context of economic development, was only meant to deal with those issues where our comprehensive plan and/or our zoning and our land development code are somehow getting in the way of getting economic development started here, jump-started here in the city, but being responsible about it, not just giving the city away because we want jobs and we want more space filled. We need to be reasonable about that. When we talk about the potential update to the comprehensive plan, if the council even wants that, first, there's a review as to whether or not it makes sense to update the comprehensive plan. Second thing is, does the council want it? Do the residents want it? I mean, those are decisions that are not made tonight with any kind of adoption of this document. With regards to FGCU, that was simply, I mean, you could take the words, you could take the letters FGCU out, and you could place the word consultant in there. Our issue simply was that we need some help from the outside to do the heavy lifting with regards to review some of the documents that we have for proper citizen outreach that our relatively limited staff would be strained to do properly. FGCU, regardless of what you say about them, have had a significant amount of experience with other cities with regards to looking at their comprehensive plans. That's why I think it was suggested here, but their scope of work could be whatever we call it to be. We have planners on staff that are AICPs, and they certainly could be giving recommendations to this council as to what changes, if any, after citizen input would be required. But what I've seen happen in the past is that this process starts with citizen input through surveys, through opportunities, through the website for surveys, for multiple citizen forums on this topic. And again, we're talking citywide here. We're not talking just one specific area or any one specific area. And so that's really what the issue with FGCU was, that's the issue with the comp plan, and we know that Chapter Four has been a concern for some time, and that has got to be resolved. I do recognize as well that any inconsistencies in our zoning compared to the land use has got to, they've got to be resolved, because not only is it the right thing to do in reaching the vision, but it also makes it more difficult for people who want to do economic development in the city within the context of economic development. So I hope that answers your questions.
Good, thank you very much. Well done. John, you have something?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this specific question, I have four or five other issues that I want to talk about later, but I'm glad we started with this because I think it's where the folks in the room are concerned about. I tried to make this point, I don't think I articulated it very well in October, but the, starting with a priority to update and improve the comp plan in and of itself, I think is getting the horse way, way before the cart. Ms. Konikowski actually made the point, I think, more clearly than I did when she said, "You have to wait for a public need, or you have to wait for a problem to be identified, and then, secondly, come to the conclusion," this is, I think maybe expanding on her point, "then come to the conclusion that the way to solve that problem is either to amend the LDC, or amend the comp plan, or amend the administrative code, or something else. Sit down and give code enforcement a good talking to because they aren't, they're ignoring some statutes or ordinances or things like that, and maybe we just have more of an administrative problem rather than a law problem." So I think that's the important place to start with, and I said it in October, and I'll say it again. Just updating the comp plan as a priority is just, it's, that's just opening a can of worms that I don't think we need to open. When I, three years ago, when, four years ago, when I started on the city council, we started on that process of completely rewriting Chapter Four, and we wasted hundreds of hours of time and put the folks on the beach through the grinder again, because when you start by rewriting some, decide, "Let's just open it up and figure out what's wrong with it and rewrite it," you never know where it's going to end up, and I don't, I've got three meetings left, so I'm not, I'm not going to be here. But I don't think this city, I don't think this city council, I don't think the folks on the beach need to have to continue to come in here because we're going to sort of open the can and see whether the worms are in there or not. I just don't think we need to do that. Having said that, I will go make another point. I do think that the conclusion that there are comp plan issues, LDC issues, and things like that, that at the end of a discussion about what the concerns are for the folks on the beach may include some small words, some minor in terms of size amendments to the comp plan or the LDC. And let me just give you a great example. I'm glad somebody brought this up today. Hickory Boulevard is a county road. We all understand that. Our comp plan and our LDC are not perfect, because if our comp plan and our LDC were perfect, that billboard that sits on Imperial Parkway and Benita Beach Road, two county roadways, would not be sitting in a county roadway. And if our comp plan and LDC are perfect, I suspect that nobody really wanted to see that happen. Hickory Boulevard is a county road. Maybe there's something in that comp plan or LDC that needs to be amended, so you have a big, so we don't have a big billboard like that sitting out on Hickory Boulevard. Think about it. Just think about it for a minute. That comp plan is not perfect. It's never going to be perfect, but to just sort of suggest that nobody wants to mess with it, I'm not sure gets us where we need to go. Nobody in this room wants the character of that beach to change, but I can tell you, and I said this at the last, in October as well, when the economy comes roaring back as it will someday, the economic pressure to find the loopholes that the billboard folks have, think they found in terms of our billboard ordinance, to find the loopholes in the comp plan, to find the loopholes in the LDC, to let things happen like that beach board, like that billboard situation, I think we're going to possibly look back and see. I wish the comp plan said very clearly that single-family residences ought to be, or single-family lots on Benita Beach ought to be single-family lots, and it ought to say that clearly, rather than having to go to six different points in a comp plan and piece together a legal argument, because if it takes six steps to come to that conclusion, good lawyers can find six other steps to come to just the opposite conclusion. So I just, that's just a word of caution, I think, in terms of, nobody wants multifamily where there's single-family out there, nobody wants commercial where there's single-family out there, nobody wants any more commercial out there than is out there right now, nobody wants any more beach parks or beach clubs than are out there right now, and I think that we could go a long way by simply saying what I just said in a comp plan amendment and make it real, real clear that that's what this community wants. There's not a person in this room that wants anything different. The other thing I want to, but the point is, going back to, to just sort of finish this up, the real point has to be that amending the comp plan or the LDC is a tool. It's not a strategy, it's not an objective in and of itself. And then last thing is, in terms of the overlay on Benita Beach, that clearly does not need to be under economic development. That needs to be somewhere else, anywhere else. You may agree or you may disagree about whether we need an overlay. I sort of think maybe we do, but again, that's not my call, but it sure as heck doesn't need to cloud the economic development subject, because a beach overlay really doesn't have a heck of a lot to do with economic development. Doesn't have a lot to do with jobs, it doesn't have a lot to do with anything other than the quality of life, and maybe that ought to be more properly under the environment rather than under anything else. So I hope that.
Yes, thank you.
I wish I had said that as clearly as in October, but I hope I made my point.
Well, you said it clearly this time. Anyone else? Yes, go ahead.
John, thank you so very much. Some of those thoughts were very well thought out, and I just want to make sure that the people on Hickory Boulevard are very clear that a lot of this stuff is premature in terms of thinking that we're going to approve any of this, and I think there's ample room here for the public to discuss. For example, the overlay, what does it say? Conduct a public workshop to discuss. So I just want to make sure that you all know that we're transparent and we want public input, and as John said so clearly, that nobody wants that Hickory Boulevard to change. We love it the way it is, and we want to keep it that way. So whatever we have to do, we're going to do it.
Okay, good, good. Yes?
Yeah, ditto.
Go ahead.
Yeah. And I think, I think all of us agree with this. As John said, we love the character. There are some loopholes that are in there. I agree with John, and, you know, if there were going to be an overlay, and I've discussed with some of you, I don't know, some of you we've emailed about beach re-nourishment and about this, I wouldn't do anything, for me, other than want to protect your ability to have single-family homes, maintain the condos that are there, you know, the little mobile home park that's there. What's there is what's there, although, I mean, there's an opportunity to have another beach club. I don't think you want another beach club out there. I've seen that reiterated many times. There might be a need to change something into a non-conforming use, and that overlay, as John has simply stated, could, I don't know if we need an overlay, or to simply state those objectives. Citizens don't want this, this, and this, and as the strategic plan, because I said it was aggressive, that, I don't mean that in a bad way, I mean, it's energetic, but I think that to, for me, to approve it tonight, I have so many things that I'd like to interject here, you don't want to hear them all in one day, so I won't do that to you. If we don't, if we could take this block by block, and where the part about Hickory Boulevard is, have the citizens come in and participate, tell us what you want, you know, not changing it, I think Mr. Spear is right. There are some places that may be weak, particularly the billboard, but also, you know, somebody may be buying up a couple of residential homes and turning it into a private park, or, you know, something like that, where we can prohibit some of that from going on, and then you can protect your way of life there. I think it's really important, but of the overall conversation about this, I would like to see us maybe tonight, instead of approving all of this, to take it chunk by chunk and really do planning, a planning workshop for each area, maybe a little education. We're going to have a new member here who hasn't been here for the history of what we've done. Ben and I have been here a long time, yeah, not that long, but he's a lot longer than me. But, you know, we remember the RPMK study, which, you know, some of you who are new here maybe do not remember about some of the concepts of urban planning for downtown revitalization that are important, which we'd want to, you know, maybe be updated on. So if we take the section and make it clear about downtown revitalization, and then maybe get some education as well on economic development, hear from the different parties, get the reports from the BSEED, hear from the citizenry about what they want to do, and go each by each, that I would really appreciate to do. I think, I think this is a lot to chew on for when I, and as I said, I have, you think I talked a lot right now? I have a lot of inserts in here that I would like to insert, so.
Okay, Bill?
Thank you, Ben. I just had a case last week about something, another zoning case that had some other things about it that were not very good, because the uses that would be permitted for, even after the change was made, the zoning would be changed, and I believe we really should slow down. We should look at the zoning and the future land use map and fix those things first. What scares me the most about all the projects is the number of uses that are permitted for any given thing, and I don't know all of them, but, I mean, you can approve something, there's 40 different uses that could be applied, and somebody could come in and do, excuse me, thank you.
Yeah, please.
So I really think we should table this, and then, of course, as far as FGC was there, and I had a conversation with Carl last week, and I did ask about it, and I thought I didn't really want, I thought maybe we should have an outside consultant, which we talked about, or something like that differently, but I think we should table this and go very slowly and take care of the zoning and the future land use map first before we get into asking to change the comp plan, and we need to ask the people about that first. They come first. All the residents here should have a say whether we're going to change anything in the comp plan. Thank you.
Great. Anything else? Just a couple of comments here. We've talked a lot about one provision. This is a pretty sizable document, 11 pages, and really, we've talked about one block in this provision. If, if, this is, this was your strategic plan, there was public input there, everything was going on there, and this is staff's attempt to go ahead and put that, what you've told them to do, and to put strategies, metrics, where they can measure that at the end of it. If there's a particular item along here, council, you can do what you want to do, but for us to bail out of the entire document because of one provision in there that causes angst, and I have to agree, I think it's more of how it's written than, or what's written down there. written down there than what the essence really was supposed to be. And you're right, before you go changing the comprehensive plan, you have to review. You have to review it. You have to take a look at it. So instead of saying, update, improve comprehensive plan, it should have probably said, in retrospect, review comprehensive plan, or better yet, you know, do a workshop on economic development and see if there is anything that could be done to improve through the zoning regulations or through anything else, which would allow other scientific technologies. So there's some tweaks you can do on that. So far as the creating the overlay on Hickory Island, that was a mistake to put it underneath economic development, because it didn't. It didn't really have anything to do with economic development, other than the beach is a significant tourist generator, and that is economic development. But what it did, it gave the impression, once again, that the city had designs on commercializing and economically developing the beach, which it does not. Does not. I don't know anybody who wants it. And so far as there being, it becoming a Fort Myers Beach, that's everyone's shared nightmare. I would suppose even Fort Myers Beach probably doesn't want the competition or whatever. I mean, they have their particular set of problems and their characteristics. We have ours. I don't know if that was going to happen, I think there'd have been significant changes, really significant changes. It's just not going to, no one's going to allow that to happen. I know you're not going to allow it to happen. I think you've made that really clear. And the city council, you know what, isn't going to let that happen. Now, and if it's not an overlay or another mechanism that solidifies that and puts that down, whether it's a, you know, welcome to Hickory Boulevard, or, you know, get out of Hickory Boulevard if you're doing this, whatever it is, if it's a distillation of what those regulations are, or whether it's an actual overlay that makes it really clear exactly what you can do, and it precludes you doing some variances, if it absolutely precludes those variances or precludes the application of that, why not? But in the process, if it should have said, in there, it should have said, examine and determine whether that is needed, what's wrong with that? There's nothing wrong with having a discussion about something. But I would hate to see council just kind of pitch this whole thing this evening without due consideration to these other projects. I'm going to go to John Gutierrez and then come back to you. Go ahead.
Part of the reason why it took staff, as long as it did, to bring you this document, and a lot of the credit of getting it, I think, in the workable form that it is, for the most part, goes to Carl for walking staff through the process. But part of what I viewed as, I don't want to call it a handicap, but one of the restrictions, basically, that we were working under was that we didn't want to go back and rewrite and redo what council had produced at the workshop. So we were bound, to a certain extent, to use the language and the terminology and the placement as it developed out of the workshop. In retrospect, and again, we didn't want to change that, but work forward from that. But in retrospect, I think the anxiety that we're all feeling is that, when you look at the very bottom, the last thing on page one, and then the first thing on page two, "update, improve comp plan LDC" reads as a conclusion.
Yeah.
Whereas, potentially, what the intent may have been was a review of comp plan and LDC, what do you want to call this, to see if there's a necessity to change or improve. The other items, the strategies and the metrics are exactly, or an attempt at least, to identify exactly what you're then talking about, how you would go through that. You'd hire an outside consultant, hopefully to give us some assistance with the heavy lifting. You'd have public workshops. You'd have input. Those are the things that we've tried to identify in the strategies and then the metrics. But I think the anxiety comes from just that opening statement, which reads as a conclusion as opposed to a question.
Good point.
Yeah.
The second thing, which is the first thing on page two, my recollection of the conversation as to why the whole idea of create an overlay for Hickory Island shows up in this category to begin with, and I could be wrong, but my recollection was, that was a reflection of exactly what Councilman Spear was saying, was that no one had the intention or the desire to see economic development there. This was an attempt to draw that line, to differentiate. It's under the heading of economic development, but one was to see what we could do to foster economic development. This was an attempt to say, what can we do to define where we don't want economic development? We don't want to encourage those kind of things. And I believe that's why this showed up in that particular place. And again, maybe in retrospect, it might be better suited in some other place, but I just want to give that as potentially part of the context of why it shows up here. Wasn't an attempt to say, we want to do economic development on Hickory Island. It was an attempt to differentiate from where we are saying we do want to encourage economic development.
Right.
Good point.
Okay. John, you have something else to add?
Yeah, I think, and let me sort of float this out as really what I think we're all talking about. When I say everybody, I don't mean just the seven of us, but everybody in this room, is really we're, I think we're talking about the fact that it is important to preserve what is important on Benita Beach. Single-family residential, no more multifamily, no more commercial, no more private clubs. And, you know, and now, I, and I've listened to that for the four years I've been up here, and it's perfectly crystal clear to me. And I think it's crystal clear to the rest of it, and I don't see anybody standing up saying, John, you got it all wrong. We all understand that. I think somehow we need, it's important enough that we keep coming back and talking about this, and you guys keep coming back in here and raising cane about it. I think we all agree on that as the premise, but we seem to be at loggerheads, at a stalemate or something, about what we need to do to accomplish that. And, you know, one, you know, some people keep saying, just fix the zoning maps, correct the errors on the zoning map and all the problems get solved. Maybe that's true, maybe that's not. Some people say, an overlay. Maybe that's true, maybe that's not. Some people say, amend the comp plan. Maybe that's true, maybe that's not. But we keep agreeing on what's important, but nothing gets done. And what's happened in the four years I've been up here is, we all agree on this, and what have we done? We've done nothing. And again, I firmly believe that continuing to do nothing is eventually going to end up with a train wreck on Hickory Boulevard. We need to get together on this, and when I say we, my family owns property out there too. We need to get together on this and get it done. The status quo, I don't think is the right answer, but we need to get together on this and get it done right, or we are going to have a problem some point in the future, and poor Audrey or her successor at some point is going to sit up there and say, I'm sorry, the comp plan wasn't clear enough, the LDC wasn't clear enough, and we're stuck with fill-in-the-blank, and just fill in the blank with your worst nightmare. And it may be a big old billboard, it may be a big condo building, you know, some people, and I think this has been exaggeration, it may, it's not going to be a Walmart out there, but that's been, you know, that's been thrown around as a threat. But it may be a big old restaurant, it may be a big old something out there that none of us want. So somehow we need to write down five or 10 words in an objective that we need to deal with the issues associated with the beach without having the answers built into the issue. And it's a simple, to me, it's as simple as saying, address the issues of public concern on the beach and determine what are the proper solutions, or something like that.
Yeah, I think that that could be really easily written to, you know, review methodology and methods to protect the residential character of the Hickory Island area, or something to that effect. Would be a good start, because then you would have a starting place, and it would be workshops and that type of thing. Find out what people want and don't like, like we don't know that already, but it'd be good that we get that reinforced.
And then, and then the hard part, and the hard part's going to be, once we start that process, then we're going to have to start trusting each other, that there aren't hidden agendas, there aren't people playing games, there isn't some sort of hidden plan to, you know, to pave paradise out there. Because in the four years I've been up here, I haven't seen it, and, but just as clearly as I haven't seen it, there are a lot of people that believe that there's something nefarious going on. And that's, that you can't write down in a plan. That's just something that we're all going to have to get together on.
Okay. Oh, yes, Steve?
I think it's better than I expected, frankly. Carl took a hodgepodge of ideas and three dozen sheets of paper and condensed it into something that makes some sense. Yeah, I didn't expect anything probably this good. Like Councilman Simons, I have lots of things I want to put in there. That's what this document's for. It was a starting point. It wasn't an ending point. This was something to get us to thinking, and one of the, one of the action plans is to hold a public, open public seminar on different topics. That's what we're doing. Secondly, if it wasn't for the citizens coming in and saying something, then I'd be disappointed. So thank you for being here tonight. This is your city, and if we don't hear from you, then we don't know what you're thinking. So thank you for being here. But this is exactly where we should be. I don't want to throw this thing out. You know, we need, this is not, this is not as complicated as everybody's making it. There's some issues we need to address, and we will, but let's take one at a time and get on to business.
Why don't we, why don't we do this like this? I think that maybe the first step, if we just concentrate on looking at the objectives, priorities, there's that column right there. Take that tonight, kind of give some instructions to staff on how we would like to go ahead. I think you've got, Carl, I think you've got kind of the gist of what we need to change so far as to get that better guided towards what we want to do so far as protecting the character of Little Hickory Island, that type of thing?
Yes, yes.
Counsel, when it comes under downtown Benita, do you see those objectives and priorities? Revitalize downtown Benita, update downtown plan, create promotional plan, promote a vision, address bamboo property future? Any comments about that? John?
Yeah, this is, this is really what I, I think the next step here in terms of taking this, taking this downtown section is really to perhaps take a step back. And I think that we need to go through a, sort of a mini strategic planning process and really start talking again about what our hopes and dreams and visions are for downtown. What we're dealing with in the current comp plan, what we're dealing with in terms of the downtown master plan is a vision that's 10 years old, and it's a division that was, and it's a vision that may be okay, but maybe not. And I, and I think we need to, and this first strategy here is, I think, a good start, although I think it probably, it's, we need to get our arms around this. I was so excited two weeks ago, seeing what happened at the Shangri-La. But if our hopes and dreams about what the Shangri-La is going to do for downtown is realized, we aren't ready for it. We aren't ready for a surprise boom downtown in terms of demand for development, redevelopment, in terms of protecting the environment, in terms of protect, in terms of transportation, in terms of land use, or, and particularly water management. And unfortunately, again, we haven't, we haven't spent the last two or three years when things were quiet to do that, but I think we need to get after that and get after that now. So this is, this is not a bad start here, but I think we need to, let me just jump to a page here where I thought that the staff did a spectacular job in terms of how this should read. And that's on page three, where it talks about fiscal health. And right in the middle of the page, there's an objective, and then there are some very nice milestones in terms about what needs to be done. And somehow this needs to be flexed around a little bit, to start with a workshop, you know, in the first quarter of 2012. Give the staff a month to get pulled together based on that input in terms of what our vision is, what needs to, what are some of the tools that we can accomplish that with, come back and really, in a really tight timeframe, get that done. That was our number one priority in October. I think it's, after seeing what happened at Shangri-La, it's even more important that that's our number one priority, and we need to get it, we need to get after it and get it right.
Well, under strategies, and I think that what happens is, the objectives and the strategies get a little confused here, not on this piece of paper, but it's easy for us to look at that. And if the overall objective is to revitalize downtown Benita, that kind of says it all, most of it, if that is indeed a strategy or objective. And then it says, to conduct that workshop with city council to discuss what the envisioned plan was for the downtown redevelopment. That's something that needs to be done. Before you go through figuring out what you need to change, if there's anything additional, you need to know what the actual plan was, urban plan is, and what's in place. And revisit existing ordinances, including the overlay district for expansive use and incentives. Find out what the incentives are. Then the next one would be to coordinate with all the merchants and everybody else to develop a consistent, united promotional message. And then promote the defined vision of this city. Now, if there's, if, in order to get through this, Carl, I mean, without having to reinvent the wheel here, would you suggest doing as yet another phase in this strategic planning here in order to get to that?
Well, I think there's a couple of things I could offer here. Number one, we could come together again and go through the entire document. And of course, that's always an option. I think we could also, if you will give us, give the staff some leeway on this document, we could probably restructure it and chunk it up a little bit more, where, where you have multiple objectives and priorities right now, and some of them may well be strategies. Okay? When you talk about revitalizing downtown Benita, okay, one of your strategies could very easily be, let's create a promotional plan by such and such a time. Okay? If we could, if the council would give us leeway, we could chunk this up into the large objectives, the major things you want us to do, not 47 of them, or whatever the count is on this, but we get it down to what might be five or six of the major, the major things you want us to focus on. And then the rest of this could fall under each of those. Okay? I mean, so we could simplify this a little bit more, and most of those might well be starting with additional workshops with council. I know we've talked about it for revitalize downtown Benita. You may want, you may want a separate workshop for economic development in the city as a whole. You may want a separate workshop with what to do out on Hickory Island. You may want one with regards to sustainability, or about what are we doing with our infrastructure? And so if the council would allow us some leeway there and would grant us that authority, we could probably redo this document, make sure it's worded a little bit more carefully and appropriately, and chunk it up so we're not looking at 47 objectives. We're down to the major, less than 10. And then sub-priorities or strategies under each of those. I don't know if that makes any sense, but we could at least come back before we went to another workshop to see if that was closer to what the council was looking for, and it might minimize what would be required in the next workshop if we had to have one.
Yeah. And I do think that that's a good idea, and I think that because some of these are, we do have some strategies and objectives, and it's not your fault, that's, we were spewing strategies out there instead of being objectives when we were at our meeting. But go ahead.
Ben, thank you. And I'm good with that. I want citizen participation. It's also an educational process, too, where we're putting out information, then, as tonight, the citizens are reflecting back, like it, don't like it. And so I think it can be a really exciting time for the city to look over these different things. Infrastructure. What's anybody know of in the city about infrastructure? I mean, call me nerdy, but I think that's cool stuff. So, but we've never really had a workshop about our infrastructure, really. We've, we've looked at stormwater master plans and the park plan and this and that, you know, but to overall, to take a review of that. I like that idea. My concern with just accepting the document as it is today could be that, my fear, is that it would be exclusionary of developing other strategies and objectives within those areas. For instance, what's not mentioned here, and it's lovely to see you, Councilman Grant, formerly, the railroad. I mean, that could be under economic development for a future legislative process, you know, down the road. Historic preservation, that's not talked about in here. Is that part of our downtown revitalization plan or not? Are we just going to knock it down? Or are we going to keep the feel that we have? Color codes, I see Mr. Lewis here, he likes color codes. Do we want to discuss that? So I'm just, I'm just concerned about if we, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, that we're being exclusionary here. I don't want this to be accepted, and sorry, Martha, but you can't add anything else to that, because that's what we're doing.
Well, I think strategically what you do is Well, I, I think strategically what you do is you direct staff to achieve some objectives or priorities. And we go through whatever processes to get from here to there, obviously with the council. And in those future council discussions can be the opportunity to add items to the list that need to be considered. You know, what to do with the railroad, you know, what to do with sidewalks or infrastructure, or what to do with our future parks, you know, or the parks we have now. So, I mean, I think there's opportunities as we hold workshops for the council to add and bring up any item they would like with regards relative to those items.
Yes. John?
Perfect.
Yeah, Martha, I think the response to this, uh, to the, the response to that, and the reason I've been such a proponent of this for three years and 11 months, um, has been that my observation, both in those three years and 11 months and the, the, whatever, eight years or 10 years before that, is it seems like the city council has careened from issue to issue to issue. Uh, and I, it, it just, it, it was maddening watching, you know, this, the council chew on an issue, hand it back to staff, and then six months or a year later asking, um, why did we ever hear back from you on it? And it's, it's, well, you know, other stuff came up, you know, and, uh, of course, other stuff is going to come up, it's going to be important stuff, but, uh, it's one of those things. I mean, we've done a good job, I think, over the last couple of years in, in keeping our eye on the ball on economic development. Uh, very much so, I think. But I think if we, and what Carl said, I, I, he was, he was sort of channeling my thoughts and probably channeling the conversation we had yesterday.
Wow.
Uh, that, that we need to identify, a strategic plan that's 11 pages long is way too long. Uh, a strategic plan that has 50, 47 objectives is way too long. But we need to have four or five priorities and focus on those. And if somebody says, well, you know, let's, let's talk about, well, let's, let's use Alex's example of talking about, uh, the city taking over, uh, the fire department and fire service. Even if some people, it, it, you know, that didn't come up in October, it's come up a little bit now. Uh, I think if we have a strategic plan, I think we can say, that's an interesting subject, but let's get, let's deal with downtown, let's deal with the issues on the beach, let's deal with, uh, uh, the sustainability, environmental issues, and, uh, and once we get those under control and our arms around those and those sort of where we want to be or on the way to where they want to be, then maybe we can talk about a, uh, tackling that very difficult and complex issue rather than, and frankly, and I'll just, I'll go ahead and say it here. We talked about doing a strategic planning, uh, exercise two years ago, and what did we, what, what did that workshop entail? It entailed two presentations that each took 45 minutes. One was about, uh, CRA's and TIF financing and stuff like that that we hadn't talked about for two years. And the other was the library. And, uh, October 31st at the meeting, the library didn't really make, there were three dots put on the library. That didn't really make the cut, and yet we've continued to sort of pound on that. And even now, it's on page, it's on page 11 out of 11 pages. And, um, it, it's either an important priority or it's not, and frankly, it didn't seem like it on October 31st. But the, the point is, we need to, we, we need to, we need a sort of a roadmap to keep, you all need a roadmap to keep from getting distracted on the issue du jour. And, um, this is a good start. I think what Carl said in terms of, of, really, the priorities ought to, ought to be over in the left-hand column. Downtown, the beach, uh, you know, uh, economic development, uh, the environment, sustainability, something like that.
Communication.
And, and, uh, maybe something along the lines of transportation, uh, in the broad, both in the, in the traditional sense and the broader sense. And, um, uh, and then we start talking about how we're going to tackle those. And I, and I'm, I'm feeling some regret here, I'm going to miss the, uh, getting to the final product here on the strategic.
No, he'll have this finished tomorrow. Go ahead. Steve, what do you have for us?
Uh, Mayor, if we're in a position to do so, I would like to, uh, move ahead with Carl's suggestion, and I would second that.
Okay, and we have motion and second for, to go ahead and let staff go ahead and, I'm not going to use the word that you did, but, uh, go ahead and get this all straightened out and get it all accumulated into something that's a similar, simpler document, something that's a little more understandable, and that straightens out these stra, uh, strategies and priorities. Okay?
That'd be great.
Okay? Good. Any other comment?
I have a comment.
Yep.
John, you mentioned the library, and this may be the time or not the time, but I'm going to say something. Uh, we had a wonderful task force that worked for nine months on that particular item. And, uh, it's really about time that the public knows exactly why we have the situation we have in the library. And I, I, I'm going to talk about it because it's, it's very important from my perspective because of a couple of things. Number one, we have a library that isn't even like any of the other libraries in this, in the county. It's inadequate, so forth, but it, it's a county library. And we have, in this community, spent $41 million to run the library in the last 12 years, and it's cost about $15 million to run it. And there's $28 million that went to the county, and not that they haven't done a good job of maintaining the library and have adequate staff, but the point is, $28 million have been spent. The library task force came to the conclusion that we were going to work through the county to try to get some help from them because of the money that we've spent, the citizens have paid for, and we've done that. We sent a resolution up and asked them to come forward and start to help us. Well, guess what? They didn't put anything in their CPI budget in this current year, nothing. And it may sound small to some people up here, but it's major because the taxpayers are paying through the nose to gather that coverage from the county. And the second thing is that the task force also said if we couldn't deal with the county, we might want to go on our own and do it ourselves within the framework of the city's budget, which is also possible. But nothing's happened, but I, I real, my, the task force that I had, those people are volunteers, they worked hard, and they were very much into what they were doing, and just to dismiss them up here tonight by John's comments, uh, I think it's a, maybe there were three people, I don't know how the three, that came up here, but the fact is that the, the citizens deserve more in this city from the county about the library. Thank you.
Councilman Spear?
Yeah, yeah, my name was mentioned, so I think I have a right to respond. And Bill, I'll just simply say, again, in three years and 11 months, I've never had anybody come up to me and, and raise the library as a strong, significant issue. We, there's been some talk about it in this council, there's been some talk about it in the city staff, but I, there's, that has never been a burning issue, and that's my only point. I am as outraged as you are about the fact that the, that the county's collected $41 million and spent $15 million, and that's a county governance issue. What I struggle with is that simple question of, uh, do we really need to build a library? Or expand double, triple the size of the library when a good argument could be made that libraries are, are a dinosaur, they're a thing of the past? Uh, and that, uh, and frankly, I, I would stand for the proposition that if that conclusion's true, I don't know if that's true, but I, that's, that's my personal opinion, but that's just one taxpayer's opinion, uh, that, that bricks and mortar libraries are not something that is going to be all that significant in the 21st century. A place where you stack books, uh, and you look at dusty old books in a, in a two or three-story building. I don't think that that is a 21st century approach. And frankly, it, it offends me just as much to waste $4 million of, of Benita Springs money as it does, or, well, it offends me just as much to waste Lee County money as Benita Springs money because it's all our money. And, uh, again, I, we're talking about what's important to the community, and I'll, and the only point I was making is that, uh, I have never seen a public ground swell in this community to build, to, to double or triple the size of that library. So, I mean, occasionally people say, yeah, that'd be a good idea. Occasionally, a lot of, you know, there are a lot of ideas that people throw around from time to time, but I think the fact that the, that the effort has sort of floundered over the last two years reflects the fact that there's not significant public interest in that, and we've spent a lot of time and energy pursuing something that the public is not very excited about, and that's all.
Well, can I comment, Ben?
Yeah, and then we'll go ahead and go to staff.
Look, it comes down to dollars and cents, okay? Right now, we send the county $2.5 million a year to fund that library. That's because the tax rate, the values of the properties have gone down. In '05 and '06, we were spending, sending $5 million to the county for the same library. Now, that's the financial side of it. The fiscal side of it is that there was never any suggestion from the task force to build a new building. There was none, there wasn't any. There was the idea that they would add or improve the existing building because of the junior high school being next to it, and that's where we were, we were approaching it. But it wasn't going to cost the taxpayers from the city of Benita Springs for it, it's the county. The county has an obligation to give us the same treatment they give everybody else, and they've kept all the money. And as far as I remember, excuse me, in '06, there was $10 million in the CPI budget in this town for a new library. $10 million. And I have the sheet to prove it, but that never happened either. But the whole point is, is that we have done a, and my, my fellow council people have looked at a lot of things. This is one issue that I feel is so important from a financial perspective for the city's health, because if we can utilize money more effectively than they, than they're, than they're giving us, we should do it. But we should also get compensation for all the years. I mean, it's not a couple hundred thousand dollars, it's $28 million. And the, the point, the point is that this task force recommended exactly the procedure we should follow, but we haven't pressed the county for the money. We've sent a resolution up there, please help us. We have to do more than that, because I want the money back in the town here where I live for the kids. Thank you. Thank you, John, I didn't mean to raise my voice.
I could hear you either way, but I, I appreciate your emotion and...
John Gachona, so far, you've been having some communications with the, the county staff, and you've been making some progress there?
Just today, as a matter of fact. We've been trying to communicate staff to staff about their evaluation of the, uh, the task force analysis of the situation. I think I've reported to you that, uh, from a county facilities point of view and the county library system folks' point of view, um, they were not, they did not see as the most viable option adding on to the existing building, because if you remember correctly, that building has been kind of added on to a couple of times already. And in order to get usable space, as Councilman Spear indicated, for the more current uses of libraries, which involve more meeting rooms and electronic rooms, media rooms, to get that kind of space, their analysis was that their first choice would not be to add on to the existing building, but rather to tear down and start fresh on that location. So, that would be their first choice. They also wanted to look at the viability of other space within the city that could be viable option. I don't have any update on that analysis, but I do know, as I think I reported to council, that their plan is to update the board of county commissioners at the management and planning meeting. Originally, they thought it might be the January one, that scheduled agenda just came out, so it's not on that. I suspect it'll be on the February one, and that's what I contacted them about today just to make sure that it would be on the February, uh, update. They'll be doing that in the context, not only of the project here in Benita Springs, but they're also working on, uh, the potential of a project in North Fort Myers. They're also working on a project currently, uh, in the city of Fort Myers. So, again, they're kind of, their perspective might be a little different than just our focus, but we should see some update to their analysis in February, and our plan was then to bring that back to you. I don't know if we want to revitalize the, the task force at that point and take a look at what their options are, but at least from a staff-to-staff perspective, um, I have to give them credit and indicate that they are moving towards an analysis of different options with the end goal being a better facility in the city of Benita Springs. Whether or not that becomes a reality and how the funding would work out, I can't speak to, but I do know they are going through the process of those analysis.
Okay.
I know Rome wasn't built in a day, but believe me, there's no reason why we should have to wait. Or if we're not, if they're not going to do business with us, then why do we pay the taxes that we pay them?
Okay. Martha?
Ooh, you said that word. Listen, um, John, um, this was an issue when I ran for city council initially back in 2000.
I was counting on you to talk about something else, but you go ahead.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll, okay, let me just, real quick, and I'll get off the topic, but it was an issue, it's been an issue for a long time. There is a place for libraries. Uh, you know, we get one of those new Gingrich pulse, magnetic pulse things, you need a book. So, anyhow, there, libraries are developing new uses, but I think we, uh, you know, we have reiterated this since I, before the beginning of the city about the importance of our library. I think it should be downtown, but you know, that's just me, because it's good for revitalization, brings people together. Uh, anyhow, I'll move the question, I'll ask to call the question.
Uh, we have a motion and a second for, uh, kind of staff to go ahead and, and go back to work on this piece of, uh, document here. And, uh, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Spear?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Snack?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Ben?
Uh, yes.
Well, while, um, they're working on this, could, uh, the various council members just, I don't know, type in your thoughts and send them to them so that they can?
Let's, let's let them get, let's get them, let's let them get their product, uh, and then, uh, then they can have one-on-one meetings after they get the product done and get some input. Carl, would that be all right with you?
That'd be fine, absolutely.
So, they want input after they get the product done?
Yes.
Wait, let, let them take a shot at it and go ahead, and they'll, they'll let you know.
We will redo what we already have, and then we can get comments on that document and any additional comments the council may have, and then may have to come back together in a workshop, depends on how it goes.
Okay.
So, we don't want to talk to them before they put something out? All council members? No? Okay. Is that right?
We, we need, we need to allow staff to go ahead and take, and take another shot at doing this and getting it back to a form that, that is closer to what we want, and then you can take a look at that individually and meet with them. Then they can make the adjustments, and then, you know, there's no sense making adjustments now because it's, it's going to be totally different. Okay?
I'll send them a note.
Okay. I bet you will.
I know, you bet I will.
Okay, uh, all right.
Move to the previous minutes.
Um, hold on one minute, if you don't mind. Janet, you had one other thing.
Yes, I did. I forgot to mention the Benita Springs Historical Society is starting their 2012 speaker series, and on Friday night, January 13th, at 7:00 PM, and that will be held at the Lions Club facility over on Pennsylvania Avenue. They have their first author speaker. He is Mark Rentsch, who is, um, keliontologist, and he's going to talk about when the woolly mammoths and the mastodons called Benita Springs home. So, it should be, uh, very interesting, and it's free.
And they found one in '03.
You can call the Benita Springs Historical Society for more information.
I bet you do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Were they working on the land use map?
No, they, no, they weren't. They were doing something else with the land. Anyway, approval of minutes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, there was a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion and second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Snack?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Spear?
Aye.
Audrey, you had something for us?
I just want to supplement that the minutes will have a Form 8B added, um, showing the abstention by Councilman McIntosh.
Okay.
Needs to be attached to the minutes for approval.
Thank you very much. Okay. Public comment, anyone this time would like to speak about anything, just come on up?
Well, having lived in Benita for 30 years, I get a, I get a laugh out of, when we work with the county. Oh, yeah, we've got $4 million for you. We're going to tear your, we'll tear the library down and build you a new one. We'll tear it down in three, four years from now, we might start a new one. That's the way they are. I'm sorry, but that's the way I feel about Lee County. I'm sorry, but that's the way I feel about Lee County. They drag their feet, just like our const, our Ray Judas, oh, I'll give you three million dollars, oh, yeah, we'll give you three million dollars and we'll use it to build our road. That's why we became a city. Anybody that's been around here long enough to remember why we became a city? Because we're getting from Lee County, they got their own form of government, and we're too far away from them to, to get it back. So, we just got to keep fighting for what we want, that's all there is. But tearing down the library to build a new one is ridiculous, because then you're going to eliminate the library for years.
Yep.
That's their suggestion.
Thank you very much.
And then adding on to the existing one, it has to be brought up to code, so that tears it down, too. So, I think we find another spot, maybe we got a vacant lot in Old Forty-One.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, please come forward. Thank you, Rick.
Diane Frazine, you conveniently did not talk about the future cost of beach renourishment and how it's going to be funded while you were discussing the important things on the strategic plan. So, when you are reworking the strategic plan, I would hope that somewhere, there's a line on here about future funding for it, and that it not be a special assessment on us, on property owners on Little Hickory. You have funding there, I'm, I'm just shocked, two and a half million dollars a year goes for the library, and you can't find one point two million to set aside in six years? Unbelievable. That's, that's.
But, that's the county.
Grotthaus again. Some of you may know, I'm running for mayor right now, and I, and I say that because I've been talking to a lot of people, and I'm addressing Councilman Spear's remarks, I've been talking to a lot of people all over, and I can tell you, there is a lot of interest in having a library in, in Benita Springs, so, so I just wanted to impart that to you. And secondly, I, I think a nice way to approach this whole comprehensive plan review, and is maybe first to go in and correct, I believe on the record, there are emitted errors on the future land use maps. And I think the best approach is to go in, let's make, let's correct everything, make sure that we have good documentation to start with, and then start talking about a review and a, and an amending and, and an overlay perhaps, but let's, let's get a valid document to start with. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please? Anyone else like to speak? Please come forward. Seeing none, thank you, everyone, and let's see if we got the minutes approved, everything's done. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.